It being seven o'clock, I'll call a Monday, December 13th, 2021 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. First on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval, we have none. Just mentioned on the action items that, you know, Tony's many hats, he finally got the minutes completed, but you only got them for tonight, so I think we'll put that vote on that off till our next meeting, when you get to review, everyone gets to review them. We have a submission. Eighteen Old Charlton Road, application for stormwater management. Okay, and it's a completed form dated November 19th. Everything's signed off. Okay, and basically Jared is indicating that the disturbance of land is below 10,000, and it's already been a pre-approved plan back a year ago. And they're just doing some modifications to it. And Jared's willing to take it on as a minor site plan administrative run plan, so we don't have to have a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion to accept this submission and to vote to approve this as a plan that is going to go through the minor plan administrative process.
I'll make that up. I'll second it.
Sounds less painful.
Yeah, we don't have to deal with it. We won't be dealing with it. Okay? So any further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried unanimously.
And then, Mr. Chairman, as was in packet two, when the approval is made, you will receive a copy to the board for reference in the future.
Okay, okay. Okay, the time being 7:05, we have a continued public hearing, 85 Main Street. Application for site plan review and approval, applicant owner CE Realty LLC. It's the whistle-stop Byron Grill to construct an addition and associated site work and parking.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board, Tracy Sharkey, guaranteed builders, 14 West Street, Douglas, on here on behalf of the applicant. So we've made revisions through December 8th. We had a meeting with Jared, and he submitted a letter for today. He takes no exception with the proposed development at this time. So we did some infiltrator investigation, and it was pumped out. I've supplied the pumping records and pictures of the existing system on site. We added the berm, the asphalt berm. We're going to key that in at the property line. We've rearranged the parking spaces to move them outside of the Pratt Ave location. We added the two additional infiltration chambers. And supplied the updated hydrocalcs for that. We also, there's a note on the proposed screening fence, so this is, the two additional chambers were added.
Are those chambers going to have to be maintained on a regular basis?
They shouldn't be, there are inspection ports right here, but they're 100% underground, so the clean roof runoff will just go into the, it's not like the parking lot arranged with pine needles and leaves.
Okay.
Which were in the system, but the ports were clean on that. They were in the catch basin at the outlet into the system.
Tracy, are those, I know you added two more, but are they also bigger than they were?
No.
I thought you had the regular ones, and these look like they're the high HD units that might be bigger.
They're still the 28, the 280 HDs. Let me just take a peek. They're 10.33 feet by 24 feet in length. I'm sure there's a picture right here.
How much more roof runoff did you get because of the addition?
So we have, I can get you the calculation, but we did the logical amount. We did the addition, the proposed addition, as well as half of the roof, because there's a peak on the front, so we wouldn't have to dig up anything else in the parking lot. So the pitch is going this, towards this direction, and then into that roof drain.
Thank you.
And if you wanted me to get the calculation, I'm sure it's
No, no, you don't have to get this.
Okay. Looks like 229 cubic feet of storage. So the existing approximate location of the existing infiltration area is also shown on here. There is a note for layout. The fencing, the screening is going to be slanted just in case for the view down the street when you're pulling out of that driveway. The abutter is here, but it's a slanted panel versus the full, you know, so you can see the view, the first, first six feet. The arrows, we've designated the arrow locations. I think that was it.
Did you remove the parking places from the side?
It's changed.
No, we've reorientated them to be head-to-head. They were running along in a line.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you, I see it now, thank you.
All right, the only issue I got is your vinyl fence, you only show it a certain distance. You don't indicate it's the whole length.
It's going to be the whole length. I think that was just a
I'm just mentioning, because what I'm seeing on paper doesn't reflect that.
Okay.
And the other thing is, it still has that note about the proposed six-foot fence should be outside the paved area, and I thought we couldn't do that because your pavement went right to the property line. It's going to be on your property.
Yes, it is. Hold on one second. Yeah, so that was just an error on the engineer's part, so it is going to be, it is shown. The first probably
Did you pull it up, right?
You have that Google Earth ready? No? Okay. The first portion is not in the pavement, so it's, there's those bushes and, it is grass on our property, but yeah, it'll continue into our property line, within our property line.
Okay. Well, because the plan didn't say it, I, we may, we'll probably throw some conditions on there so that I make sure it
I would appreciate that, I mean, I could hand cross it out if
No, no. I just would like this plan to reflect what's actually on the ground when this thing is done.
Yeah, that first portion is not paved. That may have been the confusion, but we're planning to run the fence the entire length of the rear property line within our property.
Okay.
It's agreeable for that condition.
What's the little note about not responsible existing vegetation? What kind of vegetation?
Because it's those arborvitae's.
Oh.
They're very close to the property line or on the property line. So if they somehow don't get damaged, we don't really know. I believe the previous owner planted them.
Okay.
So I'm not sure where the, maybe the abutter can tell me, but we, and I think we spoke about this two meetings ago. Yeah, we spoke about this two meetings ago.
If it shaved off one side
Right, that's what I'm saying.
For some reason, when they put in the fence, and if all the arborvitae's get killed or something like that, if they're, you know, I mean, that wouldn't be right either.
I would envision that it's going to be within the paved area where the strong arborvitae's are growing right now.
Okay.
So it should have enough space, say two feet, but
I mean, I'm looking at
I don't know what's going to happen.
They've been in the ground a long time, it'll be, it'll take a lot to kill them usually.
Yeah, hopefully. Well, the first three may have been damaged from the salt or something. That's why those are
Our cars or whatever, you know?
Yeah, those are brown, so hopefully those will come back to life.
Richard, we're going to add a condition that the fence run the length of the property?
Yeah, yeah.
And
And what was the other one?
Well, if you read, Tony put three of them together. No vehicles shall be parked within the right-of-way Pratt Avenue, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Two, the stormwater infiltration system shall be inspected and cleaned on an annual basis or more frequently if needed, if required by the DPW. He's trying to keep the water off of Pratt Ave, okay? And three, the six-foot vinyl fence shall be installed within the property boundary, the whole length of the western, call it the western side of the site.
Well, I still think that during this process, if something happens to those arborvitae's, something that somebody should be held responsible for.
Well, we're going to try not to touch them.
Right.
If they're over, if they're overhanging the property line.
Yeah.
Yeah. They have to
I believe they
I think the abutter's here, and I think she says that she's okay with that, right?
If something I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, you're here, so you're saying that you're fine if something happens to the trees with the installation of the fence, right?
If it's consequential but not reckless.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah, I think we had a discussion to me and you about that.
When I just, you know, when I'm looking at something on a plan, saying, oh, we're not responsible with this, you know, that's all I'm seeing, I'm not seeing the whole gist of it.
Mm-hmm. So can I ask you a question? With those new parking places, they're head-to-head, so is a vehicle going to be able to get around or?
No.
No.
What should happen is somebody should pull in, and they should pull through, and then they can go out the other way.
Or face first if they'll back up, yeah.
Yeah.
So
So all cars are going to exit around the building?
Yeah.
That's basically the intent.
The intent is to exit them onto either Pratt or Main Street, not necessarily around the building.
Okay, well, go out, go out Route, the Route 12 exit out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they'll be able, so the people in the back, the three in the back will be able to get out on Pratt Ave?
The two, the people
Okay.
Still an in and out over there.
Got you, okay.
Two spots, yeah.
Yeah, got you.
I thought we, I thought you were putting berm where the existing exit is now. I see arrows still on that site.
So we went with the berm to the speed bump. So there's, what are you talking about, here?
I thought you were going to get rid of that entrance and exit right there. I thought that was the intent. I didn't, why do you need so many entrances and exits on that site?
The intent, I was, you know, when we were looking at the parking spaces so that parking would be prevented from going to Pratt Ave. Cars would be, you know, prevented from parking in there. And then there's a speed bump, and then there's curbing already here. So it narrows this location. And then you're talking about here, this is where deliveries come in.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm talking, you need that one, I understand. I thought the first one right over there.
This first one?
Yeah.
There is a
Where the speed bump is.
Yeah, that's, no.
Why does it have to be there? Just curious.
We don't have parking there, so I guess
Well, you could put parking there, if you're worried about parking. There you go, you could gain another couple right there, right?
No, because there's a spot right here.
I just think, I just think for a lot, you got, you got four entrances and exits on that plan.
And we were looking to cut down on people pulling onto Pratt Avenue willy-nilly.
I don't know, it exists now.
Yeah, yeah, it's not there, yeah, I, it exists, yeah.
I thought the intent was to get a more orderly flow of the traffic going within your site. And doing that would be to cut out four and just let two. Don't I see two on
Two on Pratt, one on Main.
Oh, no, you see here, they got two on Main.
Oh.
I don't see you filling in the second one on Main Street either.
Yeah, technically speaking, we've got these existing
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Using them, well, you got them all there, you know what I mean, it's, it's
Yeah, now I see what you're saying.
No, I, it's a, it's a pre-existing lot, so be it, but would have been nice to get rid of the first ones there and have that continuous berm.
It's not going to help the flow inside the parking lot, I mean, but that's not that's not going to, that's not an issue. It's existing, it's always been that way, people get used to it.
Right.
Yeah. Well, we're used to just driving out onto Pratt Ave as they pack that right along the road. Okay, anyone else going to add anything else they want to add?
No.
So there's, on this plan here, there's, there's two entrances on Main Street.
Yeah, and two on Pratt.
And two on Pratt.
And they're only using one according to the arrows on the plan. They're only using one entrance on Route 12, but they got two cutouts onto Route 12 now.
Right.
And they're not proposing to fill it in.
I don't know that I'm a yes on this. I don't know that I'm a yes on this. We've been giving feedback. Jared's cleared this based on the drainage, but I'm not hearing about the berms you wanted on Pratt Ave to try to keep water.
She did put one on there, and I thought it went all the way to the existing berm that was there, but now she's, now I see the two arrows there saying, she's still using that as an entrance into the site.
Entrance and exit. If you take that exit entrance out, you won't be able to use a lot of those parking spaces. How are you going to get to those spaces down by the existing concrete?
You can't, you can't, because
I mean, if somebody pulls in and parks on the other side, you can't get in there.
And on Main Street, we're within the right-of-way, so as far as doing any work, let's just say we put a berm on our property along Main Street, there would still be, the median is in the state roadway there. We would need an access permit to get permission to alter anything within the right-of-way.
But our comments to the applicant haven't been about a berm along Main Street, it's been a berm along Pratt Ave. And to cut down on people just being able to pull off of the property onto Pratt Ave anywhere on the site.
Yes.
So we're going through this process trying to make an existing site that's been this way for years a little bit better.
It's a lot better, in my opinion. We've run a berm along the entire length from that speed bump, the yellow speed bump. We've lost two, one parking spot, and we've reorientated those parking. So no one is going to be driving
Right.
You've broken, you've broken up the two
Yes, the two entrances and exits.
You have two separate, and one's mostly for deliveries, because no one's going to
Yes, and that's employee parking anyway in the back.
So, yeah, the second entrance on Pratt is mostly just for employees and deliveries. There's no parking per se back there.
So in my opinion, when we're looking at these parking spots that are currently within the right-of-way of Pratt Ave, we're pushing them, we're losing essentially two spots, because the hatched one and then one other one, and we're putting an asphalt berm along the property line so that people are not, they have to back out, and they have to go in the designated exits and entrances. It's not a free-for-all anymore.
But on Main Street, you're indicating that only one, and one entrance off of Main Street will be for access, but you're not closing off the other?
Correct. I mean, I think the arrows are just missing from that, the side, and
And again, that's all been existing, it's not like
And that's within the state's right-of-way.
And I don't think, I don't think blocking off that access is going to have any, any effect on Pratt Ave, whether people are pulling in and out of there. You know what I mean? If that, if that's the point.
No, I was, I had two-pronged on the, on the berm, and that was to keep the water inside this site, not onto Pratt Ave, okay? Yeah, it's a slightly elevated speed bump, that's about all you got there. You don't have a set berm, okay? I was, I was thinking that
Oh, they are, they are putting a berm there.
Not where the yellow is there, the speed bump. She's talking about the speed bump.
That's just the speed bump.
So he's
But doesn't that section flow back onto the site?
Yes, it's where the catch basin is.
Where you're talking about putting a berm, it already flows back to that internal catch basin on the site. So a berm isn't going to stop any water from going out into the street. It's flowing back the other way now.
In theory, yeah.
But again, there's, there's, no one's going to be able to park there either.
So you've got a topal line of 97 and 96, 96 is around the existing catch basin. So you've got 97 is at the edge of Pratt Ave.
It's okay, as long as your, your catch basin works, I agree with you. Nothing, nothing, nothing about that that I disagree with. You know? No, I, I mean, it's a that's what we got.
Yeah.
Okay? Yeah, we got some improvements, we got some more formal packing flow, okay?
Yeah, there is.
So what do you think?
It's not like we're starting from scratch here, it's an existing site, it's existing parking.
And, you know, they make, as, as much as we'd like to see more improvements, they are still making improvements to the site.
Yep.
I make a motion that we approve this site plan.
It's dated wrong, it's dated June 7th, 2021.
The title has 12-8-21.
Revised date is
Revised date of 12-8, the cover date is in a little box there.
That's where we started.
She is updating it, she has been updating it.
Christine, I never see it.
I believe the public hearing's still open though, too.
Oh, yeah, somebody from the public went on.
So I make this, I make a motion that we approve this
Oh, what?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Does anyone from the public, anyone want to talk about this? You do?
I just want to make one, your class. I'm sorry about it, you can freeze your heads up on this, but
That's okay.
Fire hydrant, I don't know if you can point that out, Tony, it's on the corner. And this, you mentioned it at the last meeting I was at, the one, the beginning of November, yeah. That people aren't supposed to park in that spot that's right there. And as I was pulling out, there's a car there, and it's, it's used as a parking space. It's not marked in any way, shape, or form, that it's not a, see, it's right there. It's not parking, and yet that's probably about five feet to the fire hydrant. And I don't know what the limits are, but you mentioned it, that it's not a parking space because of the fire hydrant, and I don't know if you can mark it off, that people shouldn't be parking there?
I don't recall, but I can have a discussion with the fire chief that there are some markings that mean it's at our property line, within the right-of-way. So that's like the point of the property.
Tracy, do you, do you include that in your parking scheme? I don't think you do, because it looks like it's half, half on the state
You're talking about the parallel.
It looks like there's a concrete base on this one anyways, it looks like this.
So the 14 total spots?
Yeah, like to the, I think you're talking about the one to the right of the concrete base?
Oh, no. We do not count that.
So can we just, if we just make a modification, on addition to the, to the vote, to have, to have you guys hatch that?
Yeah.
So it's not a parking space?
Lack it out or something.
Yeah, it's not counted in the 14, and then there's the median, and then the hydrant is right at the property line.
That's my only comment, otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone from the public want to make a comment before we close the public hearing? I know we've, we've been dealing with this thing for a while. Okay, okay, Craig.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Jeff made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, great. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously.
Go for it, Craig.
Go for it.
Thank you very much, Board. We don't need to vote on the waivers at all.
Well, we gotta
We just voted to close the public hearing.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we got, hold on.
I couldn't hear
Hold on, we gotta, we gotta get all the we gotta get all the conditions in, yeah.
Right. And the waivers.
What waivers?
In a hurry? What, in a hurry? No, 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 those are conditions.
It's on Monday.
So I'll make a motion that we approve this site plan for 85 Main Street, Oxford, Massachusetts, revised through December 8th, 2021, with the condition that that the proposed fence along the western boundary continue all the way, the whole length. I know it might be silly, but care be taken for the plantings along that boundary line? That the parking spot, or that the area, which is now used as a parking spot to the right, if I can describe it right, to the right of the existing concrete base sign, be hatched, so to delineate no, a no parking area. And I just drew a blank, what else is there?
Oh, this, you got the, no vehicles shall park in the right-of-way. The stormwater still needs to be
Do I have that list right here?
That's, that's
The middle one. Like I said, I mean, you're right, they still need to be inspected, I mean, they still need to be inspected. There should be some kind of a
The no, number one, no vehicles shall be parked in the right-of-way. The stormwater infiltration system shall be inspected and cleaned on an annual basis or more frequently if required by the DPW. And I think I already did the six-foot vinyl fence along the entire west-hand, western boundary.
So who's going to be in charge about scheduling the inspection for the
It's on the applicant.
Yeah, so Helgerson pumps the grease traps, the tanks, the septic tank, and then the, the existing infiltration system. They opened up those, the inspection ports the other day, so I sent the pictures along, but they can do that, they can do the new one as well, to make sure that it's clean. But we'll do like gutter guards and stuff, so it'll be limited, anything, any debris going in there.
Okay, as far as your, as far as your waivers, I think we've kind of approached some of them that you were looking for waivers for anyway.
Right, they, they sort of waiver from landscaping plan, a utility grading plan. We've actually gone over quite a bit of grading, if you will. We did talk about underground utility. Should the board wish to end waiver for stormwater, although as this was reviewed by DPW.
Yeah.
So we've, we've come around some of these here.
We've hit a lot of these, the only one I guess we haven't hit is any traffic. I agree with, we haven't. We know what the traffic is already, it's existing, okay? You're not, the addition is for
Storage.
Storage only, it's not for additional patrons.
And they are adding additional parking on the site.
Yep. So specifically, I don't know what you want us to put there for waivers.
Anything that I need.
Well, it's kind of
Well, it's kinda, it's kinda...
I didn't provide you with like the detail sheet, so I went through this application sheet, and anything that I didn't meet, what is this, not the right one.
Okay, well, that...
I went through this whole thing, and if I didn't meet it, then I requested it.
Okay, so, but we always go through, everything has to still go through all the appropriate boards and stuff like that. And I'm assuming if there's something that needed to be red flagged, they would let us know.
Okay, I mean, I didn't...
Am I wrong?
Didn't supply a detail sheet, so I asked for everything that I...
Detail sheet, basically geared towards new stuff.
Yeah.
Stuff you give to us.
Okay.
I know, it's kind of an existing site.
Usually, yeah.
It is.
Right.
So.
With an addition.
If you, if I, if you don't, the board doesn't believe I need any waivers, then I don't need any, and that's fine.
It still needs to pass through all, all the appropriate boards and stuff like that, and, and...
I'm talking about the ditty gritty.
We've been dealing with this for two months now, so I know we've, we've had a lot of...
Are you talking about like, are you talking about like checklist items and submittal items?
Yeah, but I guess like I said, when the building inspector, legislature inspector goes in and sees something that's not right, they're not gonna, they're not gonna pass it.
Yeah, whatever your pleasure.
If we approve this, that's part of the application. I think it's implied that we're granting those, granting those waivers.
Okay, no problem.
But we can go one by one if you want. I mean, that's...
Did they call the vote, did you call the vote yet? I'm just wondering.
No, we got a vote in action here.
Okay, I'll, I'll second your motion if somebody else is adding anything.
Get that, Tony?
Yes, yes.
I saw it right, I saw it right everything down, I said. Wrote everything down that I said.
I got those conditions.
Conditions, yes.
Okay, so you said, Jeffrey's second. Okay, further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor? Aye. I'm not sure, Craig, you can, right? Did he miss the couple of them, right?
Craig, the question would be...
I went to the first one.
Went to the first one, okay.
Yeah.
You, you didn't miss two on this? Okay.
I think so.
Then, um...
But we were here last meeting. Were you here last meeting?
I can, I can, I can...
No, you can only do that once.
Yeah.
What, I know, I can, um...
So we're still, what, how many?
I can abstain.
I can just abstain. It's fine. Yeah, I can abstain.
Then the motion should come from someone else.
Not really. We've had it that way before.
Yeah, see, it's all right. Come on, Tony, let me have something.
I can't amend it. Second it. I think we're okay, yeah.
Because he could make the motion and deny it, okay?
Okay, neither way.
Okay.
You're fine.
So...
I voted aye.
Yeah, everyone else voted aye?
Everyone else voted aye?
What'd you do?
You voted, no?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed? Okay, so it's still one, four. Still four to one. One abstain, right?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
Four and one abstention.
And one against, yeah.
And one denial.
One against, yeah.
Okay, so it, it passes. You couldn't, the lawyer, you couldn't, you couldn't work through him, so I'm sorry.
I could tell at the first meeting.
Okay. That's all righty.
Yeah, hey, I vote no sometimes, too.
Your convictions here.
Okay, I'm free to go.
Carried, so...
Do you need anything else?
Good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Keep that water under control.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
So now when we do our little berm, we'll have to see where the water flows.
That's okay. If it stays on the private way...
I like the term berm, not speed bump.
Rich, Rich, I think she's implying that everybody's gonna be licking at you if their water goes the wrong way.
It's there already. Tony, Tony's got many of, many shots of water being on that road, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Have a good night.
Okay. Next, we have a continued public hearing. Four ninety-eight Main Street, application for site plan review and approval. Gary Jackson Motors.
What's going on?
Good, good. Good, uh, we got some feedback from, uh...
I got a letter saying that I was supposed to be here on Monday, December thirteenth, at seven fifteen P M. to meet with the planning board. Is that somewhere else?
This is it.
You're in the right spot.
Have a seat. I guess you got a lot of neighbors with you, because things are dwindling down and no one's...
About the new development, right?
Yeah, yeah, have a seat.
History Estates.
Never started yet.
We're a little late already.
One more, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're just late, that's all.
I got it right here. You pull up the comments, or?
Yeah, I'm looking for the folder on that one.
What's next?
Four ninety-eight. Four ninety-eight Main, Main Street. I don't see the folder, Tony.
I get the plan.
I don't see the folder. I got eighty-five, and I got History Estates. Is this it?
Hi.
You know, after thirty-plus years, you know? And I had some sleepless nights, because these guys, you know, reminded me that, uh, there's big parking lots in town. They don't have oil separators and helping out. So it's a good thing you went to Jared, and he's helping you out.
There you go.
Okay, we... We did receive confirmation that whatever Jared wrote on his email basically took care of, uh... Conservation commission's issues. So dated November eighth, twenty twenty-one, to the planning board from Jared Duvall, DPW director. Four, four ninety-eight Main Street, site plan review. Hold on. Did you put the new one in here? Dated December thirteenth, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one, to the planning board from Jared Duvall, DPW director, for four ninety-eight Main Street, follow-up site plan review. Okay, the following document, and it's the parking plan site that we had here, that was revised on December fifth, after, I guess you guys had a meeting, decided how you would approach the water exiting the pavement. Based on review of the above documentation, I am pleased to offer the following comments. The applicant and his engineer proposed a bioswale around much of the perimeter of the parking lot, where it appears most of those site runoff travels to. If constructed in accordance with the Mass Stormwater Handbook, the bioswale should capture and provide a level of stormwater attenuation, recharge, and pollutant removal that is currently not provided. In my opinion, the inclusion of the bioswale presents a marked improvement with respect to the stormwater management on the site compared to the present condition. The applicant does not propose any underground stormwater best management practices, including catch basins and/or oil grit separators at this time. Oil grit separators are typically recommended for high-intense use parking lots, gas stations, fleet storage areas, vehicle and equipment service, and maintenance areas. Based on my understanding, the proposed use and limitations on the number of stored vehicles on site, it is my opinion the proposed bioswale is an adequate improvement at this time. Moving forward, if the applicant seeks to expand the amount of vehicles on the site, or should maintenance activities occur within the parking lot, then an oil grit separator may be required. Two, the stormwater treatment, pre-treatment area shall be provided between the edge of the parking lot and the bioswale. It is likely, it is likely most easily achieved by means of an eight-inch strip of gravel slash crushstone, followed by a three-foot minimum vegetated buffer, parentheses, grass. Prior to construction, the applicant shall provide a planting schedule for the proposed bioswale for DPW review. So that's where, in the plan, we had the revised plan that shows that. Anyone have any issues?
So this plan reflects the changes that the DPW wanted?
Yes.
So is there a, is there a planting scheme somewhere on this plan?
Is that the bottom left over here?
I mean, a planting scheme talks about specific plants, right? No?
Talks about grass.
Grass.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, cool.
Just grows.
Yep.
So, uh, quick question. The, the parking customers, I see the customer parking, right?
Yep.
And I see the, uh, the nine-foot wide access bays on the building. What is, what is the, is there twenty-four feet behind those spots between the back of the customer parking and the building?
The back of the customer parking?
Yeah, I think, isn't that what, isn't that what site plan typically wants, twenty-four feet behind parking? For people to back out and...
Looks like seventeen, right?
Right. I don't know if that's an issue or not.
And this is sixteen point six seven, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that's customer parking, no.
No, that's for keeping the cars, yeah, no.
Using the twenty-three point thirty-nine?
Yep.
Distance? If you just sort of eyeball that with the customer parking?
Yep.
Looks like they have plenty of room.
Yeah. Okay, but except for the, the spot way down the end, which is seventeen and a half feet.
It's the corner of the building.
Corner of the building.
Yeah.
I don't see that being, I mean, they have ample parking, it's not...
Okay.
Can change them to compact, so it can only be a vehicle that's smaller.
And the entrances to the bays aren't on the corner of the building. The entrances are closer to the, to the left side or to the, you know, west side.
What he's talking about is a person going into that last parking space.
The bottom right, yeah.
They would have enough room to back out without hitting your building.
Head toward Main Street, which is typically the, 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 uh, site plan would like twenty-four feet behind. That's like a standard practice, and obviously you don't have that. I mean, it's an existing site, I...
I, I don't...
It is, it still is.
Yeah, I, I don't...
You know, it looks like it's gonna be better, better than it is right now.
Yeah, a lot much.
Definitely looks better right now, with a lot of the vehicles gone, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's plenty of place to park.
That's all I got.
Okay. I like the fact the plan states the number of cars that can only be there and not to exceed twenty-eight.
Yep.
I think, I think you did a great job documenting what you intend to do.
Yeah.
Is there any signage? Or just on the building?
Uh, there's customer parking sign, and then there's a existing sign on the building.
On the building, okay.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second it.
Okay. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously.
I'll make a motion.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, we put together a few potential conditions if the board wished to consider. Many are already noted on the plan, but still wanted to share with you. First condition, and actually this was shared last time, or several meetings ago. Uh, no vehicle shall be loaded or unloaded on Main Street, condition one. Um, number two, that all parking spaces be marked and maintained per the approved plan.
Oh, is it?
Oh. Condition three, all signage shall be installed and maintained per the approved plan. All vehicles and equipment must be parked on the pavement per the approved plan. Storage of equipment vehicles shall not be allowed outside of the designated areas as, as shown. All vehicle repairs shall be conducted inside the building. This was an item that was brought up at the last meeting. Um, this one is Director Duval's condition. Prior to construction, the applicant shall provide a planting schedule for the proposed bioswale for DPW to review and approve. Number eight, that all landscaping shall be installed prior to the issuance of a final occupancy permit. If landscaping, including the bioswales and trees, cannot be planted prior to final occupancy, the building commissioner may request to hold a bond until all the landscaping is complete, and that the bonds be approved by the board. Um, this does not prevent the applicant from getting a temporary occupancy, but this, this considers this situation, should the applicant be ready to open in a month or two, certainly we wouldn't want them to be planting trees at this time. Uh, number nine, if the applicant seeks to expand the number of vehicles on site, an oil slash grit separator shall be required and approved by DPW. Any expansion of vehicles on the site regardless would require some type of modification of the class two that the applicant's gonna seek, um, down the road. So either way, um, if the applicant seeks to expand the number of vehicles on site, an oil slash grit separator be required and approved by DPW. And number ten is, uh, the business use shall comply with all local and state regulations. Uh, we'll also note, uh, there is a communication, um, in your packets from, um, earlier today, an email from the building commissioner dated today, um, indicating that the violations have been resolved, um, and the applicant has addressed them to satisfaction. So I wanted to share that with you.
Rich, can I have one other thing?
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm not gonna get all worked up about it, but should we maybe consider a fencing around the dumpster? Like a screening, some kind of screening fence around it, little, one of those vinyl jobs? That would be my suggestion. Or maybe just screened from Main Street? You know what I mean, on that?
Sure.
On that, uh, west side?
Perhaps, um, they will be, they are proposing chain link fence here, perhaps chain link fence with slats?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, just took, yeah.
What do you got there now? Nothing?
There's nothing there now.
Got nothing approved yet.
No, no, I'm saying the, the existing business that's there.
Different spot, so...
And it's open, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like every other dumpster I've seen in the car lot.
Would you mind screening it?
I'll do whatever you guys want me to do.
No, they, I mean, they, it'll actually make your lot look a little better, too.
So can we just put a, so on the left, can we just put a fence that covers it from the main traffic? So you can pull in and stop?
Yeah, yeah.
Go see it from Main Street. Drive by, that looks really nice.
We're not looking for...
Yeah.
Yeah, usually they put their gates on, you know, facing Main Street, so the trucks can come up and get it. If you wanna do it from this side, be my guest. Whatever way, uh, whatever way you can access it, that's fine.
Sounds good.
So you want to add, so one through ten plus eleven?
Yeah.
Dumpster area shall be screened at Main Street, to, at Main Street?
Yeah.
Are you guys good with all those conditions?
So if we grow and we ask for more cars on the lot, and you're gonna require the grit separator or the oil separator?
That's what the DPW has stated at this point. You know?
But something kicks in, right? It's a different class, it's a different license they have to apply for anyways.
It's a class two with...
So, so class two?
It was, yeah, site plan is required for a class two application, so, um, after this, I anticipate Gary will go forward and submit for a class two. And in the future, um, any modification to that may require change here.
May need more pavement also, if you're gonna grow. Where else are you gonna put these guys, so? I mean, the whole thing could change. Huh?
Stack them deep, so don't you?
Good slogan. Go ahead, Mark. You can make the motion.
Hmm?
You can make the motion.
Uh, I move that we approve this plan, subject to, um, conditions enumerated on the staff comments for tonight's handout, uh, one through ten, plus an additional, uh, condition number eleven, dumpster area shall be screened at Main Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? There being none? All those voting in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys, all right? At seven fifteen, we have a public hearing. Property off of History Drive. Application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, applicant... Application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, applicant Jeffrey Brosclaire. First- I'll first read the, uh, public hearing notice pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one T and eighty-one U. The Oxford Planning Board and the Oxford Planning Board Subdivision Controls, Rules and Regulations. The Oxford Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at seven fifteen on a definitive fifteen lot residential subdivision plan entitled definitive subdivision plan for a History Estates, History Drive, Town of Oxford, Worcester County, Massachusetts, for property off of History Drive and an R-three residential zoning district, shown on Assessor's Map thirty-three B, Parcel A forty-eight. The plan submitted to the planning board on November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, was prepared by DC Engineering and Survey Incorporated, dated November fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Applicant is Jeffrey Brosclaire and the owner is Carol Graves. The plans and our, and application could have been viewed at the Oxford Town Hall in the land, at the town clerk or the land development, uh, land, uh, management department. Anyone wishing to be heard should be here, and I see we've got a lot of people wishing to be heard, which is great. Uh, we did receive some, uh, correspondence. Dated December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, to the planning board. From Board of Health, dear planning board members, the plans and public hearing notice for this project were given to the Board of Health, Title Five Agent Stephen Donatelli. I will bring these documents to the board members' attention via email for your, their review and comment. The Board of Health, Title Five Agent, has no comment at this time, but reserves the right to review and comment on as the project moves forward. And we did receive this letter dated October fourth from EcoTech Incorporated, from Environment and Consulting Services, regarding the finding of the soils and whatnot. Tony? Tony, I believe Tony's, uh, said the, in his comments to us, that he received the check for your third-party review. And that hasn't, that hasn't started yet, is it correct?
Uh, we received, uh, a check, um, this morning.
Okay.
And we'll engage the DC Engineering for personal work.
Okay.
As the board recalls, other parts of the mission for their provision at the long-term.
Okay. Good evening.
How you doing? Um, Jason Dubois, DC Engineering and Survey, and, uh, along with me here is Jeff Brosclaire, the applicant. This property is located, uh, on History Drive, at the end of the dead end that's currently there. Current section of History Drive is approximately two, three hundred feet long. Uh, we're proposing to extend that, uh, an additional, I believe it's seven hundred and fifty-four feet. As you can see on the locust map here, uh, this property is in the R-three residential zone. Uh, requires a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage and twenty thousand square feet. Uh, we have proposed fifteen lots, as you can see on that plan. Let me just get into the existing properties, uh, approximately, uh, just under seventeen acres. So here's the layout here, here's where History Drive terminates currently. Uh, we're proposing this to come down to here, uh, to a cul-de-sac. The grade-
Yeah, I'd say it's difficult, though, we usually put it on the big board, but that, there's something wrong with that TV, they had to bring this one in. The seat's over on this side of the room.
A little bit.
Turn it a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, we're good, I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine, yeah, I'm, I-
If you can't see it, move to that side of the room, you'll have a better angle on it.
So as I was saying, the, you know, the road comes from here, and we're extending it down an additional seven hundred and fifty feet to the back of the cul-de-sac. Uh, we do have fifteen lots going around the property here. Streetlights, as you can see, along this section here, we have street trees shown going around the entire section of roadway. Uh, we have sidewalks on both sides, that would be four feet according to the town's, um, detail for their road section. Uh, there is some wetlands located in this area here, that was flagged, uh, by EcoTech out of Worcester. There's some wetlands here and also down in the back corner here. This plan shows the grading that would need to be done, uh, for this roadway, so coming off of the end of History Drive, uh, it, it does slope up to a high point around this area at about three and a half percent. Um, it crests and then it, it comes back down to the back of the cul-de-sac at seven and a half percent, all the way down. Uh, there is a series of catch basins, I believe there's four sets, there's some here, 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 and at the end of the cul-de-sac, those would all flow down the center of the road through manholes and down through an easement through here to the back of the property, which is downhill. Uh, that would be a infiltration basin to treat, to treat all the stormwater. These lots are all about a half acre or so. The back are slightly larger, and this remaining land here, this lot, as you can see here, I can't see the actual number right there, but I believe that one was about five acres. Um, here's the street profile that shows the three and a half percent coming off of History Drive to a crest, and then it slopes down at seven and a half percent to the end of the cul-de-sac. Uh, we do have an erosion control plan here, kind of outlining the construction phase, uh, with the tracking pad, construction vehicle parking areas, uh, sedimentation control. Infiltration basins would be built, you know, to maintain that, that sediment during construction, and then we have some details just showing all the, the different catch basins and, and the street cross-section, curbing, uh, pavement sections and, and things such as that. Uh, these houses will be on public water supply, or public, public water, municipal water, uh, with a, with a main that would be extended down, down the road to a hydrant. Um, I know the fire department requested that we add a second hydrant.
Yes.
Um, and these lots will also be served by, uh, onsite septic system, so these lots will be individually designed when the time, you know, is, is there, and they'll be reviewed by the Board of Health.
How about like, uh, you chill like electrical and-
Um, I'm, I believe is, is, is the rest of that development underground currently, or?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be-
Underground also.
Yeah. Yep.
And History Drive, that's already a public street, correct?
Yes. Yep. That's, that's about all I have for right now, I know that, you know, we will be waiting for Graves to do their review and take any comments or questions.
Now, let me just read this in there, it was on a, um, it wasn't in the folder, Tony. I don't know, did nothing get in the folder as far as what we got in front of us, so I'll just put this in when I'm done reading. Uh, it's from, uh, Kenneth Sellers, the Deputy DPW Chief. Says, "Good morning, I've reviewed the site plans for History Drive, and I have concern that the plans only show one fire hydrant. The location of the hydrant is located in the center of the rear of the cul-de-s, cul-de-sac. This location and lack of a hydrant will make the utilization of the hydrant difficult at a minimum. I would like to see two hydrants in a different location." So he doesn't wanna see it at the rear of the, uh, cul-de-sac, he wants to see it maybe prior to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I'll have to-
Maybe, maybe in the, maybe in the middle or something.
So he's looking at, uh, different location, two plus different locations.
It's one from Judy also.
Oh, okay, and we, to, we have to the planning board dated twelve-sixth, uh, from Judy Lochner, Conservation Agent. Uh, please note that the proposed development will require approval from the Conservation Commission for work within the hundred feet of the wetlands. The applicant must file a notice of intent with the commission for the roadway and stormwater management system, as well as for the houses in the buffer zone and the proposed wetland crosses. Those are the two that I, I didn't see any-
Yeah, they just were the right right now, yeah, they just were the right right now.
That's where we stand, we've got a few weeks to get a third-party review as a minimum. And we are, we didn't vote on it yet, but we're gonna vote to cancel our next meeting in December. So, uh, the fir, it'll be the first meeting in January, which is what, Tony, you got it?
January tenth.
January tenth, and we already have one scheduled.
Yes, um, there's a large park scheduled for seven oh five.
Push it, push it a little bit.
Yeah.
Go seven thirty or something like that.
We'll go to seven thirty on, on this one, to continue it till then at seven thirty, if that's okay with you. Do you have anything else you wanna add?
No, not at this time.
Not at this time, how about the public? Okay.
How do I do this?
I don't know. We used to have a mic over here, by the way, I don't know, I don't know where we-
Why don't you just come up over here and-
Yeah.
Where?
Right over there, right in the corner, that's good.
See here?
Yeah, that's good.
Jim, I actually live here, this whole piece of property here. And, um, my concern is, this is all gonna be clear cut, right? All the trees are coming out of here?
Not all the trees, I mean, whatever you need to, right, I mean.
Well, initially, I'll be clear cutting just for the road, and as the lots, you know, progressively sell, they, it'd be up to that particular buyer, how many trees they do take out, but I don't put it on clear cut in the whole thing, no.
Well, the reason I ask that is because here, it starts to slope very sharply, and I'm concerned about the drainage across. I mean, you've got five house lots here that are gonna be pretty much clear, and I'm, I don't wanna flood across my property as this, as this, uh, is built.
Right, uh, we have a, um, that dotted, uh, dash line you see?
Yep.
Yeah, that's a burn, that we're gonna create so water can't flow past the property line.
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to come back for stormwater management on all their lots when they, when they actually make the lots, too.
Right, and it, and it's, they can't, they can't.
So, as it stands right now, they, whatever he clear cuts, he has to show that he's gonna keep that water on site. I know the road is gonna be kinda like self-contained, uh, but if they, they start clearing the lots, they, that's what the third party is probably gonna mention this, too, because the, uh, pre-development flow must equal a post-development flow.
Right.
So if you don't have trees, uh, dealing with the water, you're gonna have to create something, whether it's swales, whether it's berms, whatever it takes, all the water in, on the site.
The other, a couple of other questions I have is, um, how is this gonna increase, has it been a traffic study here, you know, you know? To see how much the traffic flow is gonna increase in this neighborhood? I mean, we already have History Drive, uh, Minuteman Drive, and these areas where the traffic has increased considerably. I will tell you that the little, little Camp Hill Drive and Corbin down on my street have already started to break up when they were doing the project on, um, Charlton Street, and I realize it was a lot of traffic there. But just with the increased flow of traffic, the streets started to break up, um, stones started to come up through the street. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that people coming up Camp Hill or Monument, it's gonna destroy those streets from the increased flow of traffic here. I'm not sure how that, I used to remember how that works, but I don't anymore. So, I'm not sure whether that becomes an important issue or not.
It's a domino effect for sure, 'cause this is another subdivision on top of three or four other subdivisions that got put in there.
Right.
I do know that, uh, what do you, do you propose anything to deal with traffic?
I mean, not at this time, I mean, fifteen houses is usually a trigger for, you know, major traffic increase, but-
Talking thirty cars.
There's no second exit from here either, like from Garden Street, is there?
That's forty-five more cars. Have you ever tried to pull out on the Charlton Street? You're gonna waste your whole day of when you can leave.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know, I know, I know, I know.
Hey, you grow enough, you're gonna need a traffic light.
Right.
That's basically what's gonna happen, I mean, there's, there's certain things that trigger-
Charlton Street, you have more traffic than Main Street.
Right, oh, yeah, and depending on what time of day, yeah, you backed up for a mile.
They're not talking about miles.
No.
Yeah.
No, but you're, you're talking about the specific traffic flow in that development.
Getting out of there.
Getting out of there, right.
Isn't it my understanding, or is it changed, that there needs to be two accesses in a development and out?
Only twenty, twenty, was it twenty, twenty lots or more?
Yeah.
Twenty or more?
Twenty or more, this only has fifteen, it didn't trigger.
It's just the seven hundred feet, you're extending the cul-de-sac to seven hundred feet, correct?
Seven hundred and fifty feet further, yeah.
I thought, I thought it was five hundred was the max, no? I could be wrong.
There is a max, we have a waiver request.
You have a waiver, there is, there is a max.
There is a max.
There is a max, that's what I thought.
You're requesting a waiver request.
Yes.
Right, okay.
And, and the other question I have, and I'll sit down, is what kind of houses are you planning on building in this area, just for my own application?
Yeah, um, and I was gonna ask the board, uh, some other questions, too, as far as that goes, but the same, uh, Colonials that are up there on Minuteman, but same look, same size.
Same size?
Same style, yes. As well as, uh, that's what I'm gonna ask the planning board, there's been some, uh, comments made during tech review about the tree, the trees that I'd like to put up. I wanted to go with the same trees that the Minuteman has, so the looks of the road are the same, but I guess there was some, uh, were those trees problematic, someone had mentioned, uh?
Yeah, they put them too close to the street.
Is that, if that's all it was, I thought it was the species or something.
Jared's supposed to get us something on what he'd like to see out there for trees and spacing and-
I don't, I don't think they're blocking the road. I mean, they were planted in such a way that they kinda destroyed the sidewalks.
Is that what, right.
Places, but they're not blocking the road.
Well, I meant the canopy of them, it seemed like it was-
The canopy is hanging over the street.
If you're talking about Minuteman, there's a, there's a real nice canopy going up the hill in season.
I think it was nice, but I, there was a comment made during tech review that wasn't-
Yeah, he's, he's gonna get you the proper species and do respect for the street.
Right.
Is there, is there only one proposed street light?
No.
For the length of History Drive? Three or four, I mean, we got-
Uh, there was-
Yeah, there wouldn't be streetlights.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, those are just not traffic lights, just-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I, so right at the, right at the, let's, let's call it six o'clock at the cul-de-sac, you've got proposed street lights, see detail. So am I just supposed to follow that symbol down the rest of the street? And anything else that has that symbol is a location for a street light, 'cause it's not labeled as such?
Yeah, these, these six, the, this shows the foot candles coming out, these dash lines coming out. That shows where the streetlight spillage goes to, one of the plans.
Okay. Can we get those marked on the plan?
Label each one?
Yeah.
I think one of them, one of them is labeled as street light.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one with all the, uh, what?
Streetlights, who are we talking?
There you go.
Oh, on sheet, on sheet number-
Comments from residents who are budding the property, and they're talking about streetlights.
Well, if that happened, the question happened to come up, okay, to a board member. Well, let's hold on and let, have you, have your discussion, what, what's your, what would you like to do?
Well, my main concern is this.
Yeah.
Has, there been an environmental impact study on this, and if so, I wanna see it, okay? Cutting down all those trees on the hill. Second of all, the water, the problem, you're talking about berms and beams and all this stuff. What happens if my property turns into a swamp? Who's gonna compensate me for that, when you cut down all the trees up there? Who's gonna compensate me for when somebody's septic blows up? And where does, you know what, runs downhill, okay? This is what I wanna know, and I, I want answers before we play around with this stuff. And then, I tried getting online to see all this, I couldn't find it, I don't know if, if there's a-
It wouldn't have been online.
All right, well, then it should be online, shouldn't it?
No.
No.
We don't, we don't put our plans online.
All right, so I'm a, I'm a, I'm in the butter, I want this sent to me. Or I can go downstairs sometime and get it, right?
You can come right up to the windows in this hallway down here and ask for a set of plans.
Look at him, I want him.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can ask for copies, they, they'll give you a copy.
And then I, I heard this stormwater, these stormwater drains, where's the stormwater going?
He's gotta develop a system to handle stormwater.
A system, oh, he's gonna develop a system.
At the end of the cul-de-sac, he's got a system designed to do it.
A system.
And he's got, he's got catch basins in that part of the road.
Okay, so now, you're gonna sit here and tell me that, and this is being recorded, I hope, that when all this comes down, and then my yard is a swamp.
Where are you, show me where you are.
Ooh, show me.
Yeah, show you, where, where were you on that plan?
I'm not on, that's the woods. Show me, put it on Garden Street.
How far is Garden Street? It's on the other side, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's not even, oh my, yeah, you're not even.
Yeah, there's no water going over there.
No, you're not, yeah, you're not even.
He's barely touching that lot at all, I don't think he'll remove any trees on that.
All the water's going right here. All the water's going right here.
What's going in that five acre lot there?
This is where all the water's going right here.
One, one house.
That house, that box there, you see, that's, he's proposing one, one house.
One house.
He's gonna own five acres of land.
So, the other question, obviously, just looking at the map, we're not gonna have a thruway to West Street. Alright, that's all I wanna know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich, quick question. So I noticed that there's no lot plan, so you're gonna carve the lots out in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just for the roadway, and then we'd have to, we still have to do perk tests and for each lot.
Just wanna make sure I wasn't missing anything.
Yeah, and, and those could change too, you don't, I mean, they could, they could change, you're just estimating with the size of them right now.
Right, correct.
So does that mean the lots could be bigger, or?
Well, it depends on.
It could be, it could be tweaked.
They might not have, yeah, this is just, this is just the first, this is the first general, right.
This is more like for the roadway design, and if we have to shift lot lines later on, you know.
Yeah, you know, whatever the trending market is going towards, you know.
Just one other comment about the water, I'm sure, I'm assuming planning board is aware that historically this hill has a lot of water coming off of it. It used to, it used to be the town wells, uh, there are still lead pipes in the grounds underneath the hill that used to feed to the center of town. I had actually two wells on my property that, until we developed it, was actually, used to flow to the center of town, so there is a lot of water on the hill. All the houses down below have water in the cellar.
It's, that, that hill is probably mostly ledge underneath the first floor or five feet you go down.
Yeah, it's, actually, there's a slope over there.
Have you done any deep hole tests to see if you hit anything?
Yeah, we did a, a few. I think I did three deep holes, and a multiple, uh, maybe, you know, seven, seven perks.
Did you test to the road? Did you take?
Yeah, we did, we, we did some sampling on, on the center line of the road, just to determine how deep, I got down, you know, probably seven, eight feet without. Fusil.
You didn't have ledge to that point?
No, no, no. And this land was actually perked, um, and depolled some fifteen years ago.
Uh, we, we, this is the second subdivision that's proposed, right?
Yeah, yeah.
In fact, the first one, I think, got approved.
Go back one there.
Way back when.
This is basically, this is kinda following that science.
If anything.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, it's, I.
If anything, our stormwater management systems have increased greatly since even back then, so you gotta go through more hurdles.
I think it was, uh, Steve Bolcevich, B C engineer.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw.
Yep.
Alright, familiar.
Is he still, is he still working?
He is, yeah, yeah.
Is he?
Yep.
Mostly commercial buildings, I believe.
Oh.
Yeah.
Anyone else from the public, 'cause we're gonna continue this public hearing.
I have one more question.
Yes.
That five acre lot, can they build it and make more houses on that?
No. Well. Cause it's only vital access is off of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, cause I'm just asking, can he split it up?
Yeah, they can't, they can't do it right now, if they want to do another subdivision, they could do it, but I believe there's a lot of wetland on that five acres of land.
Yeah, that's where it kinda kicks in, yeah.
So, they'd even have to cross wetland to even make the road, whatever right of way they have it, that, down to Garden Street, so. I recall that was a discussion on the first.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, we're not, we're not going there.
Go on, you go on, you want someone that wants a lot of acreage.
Yeah, they, they got it.
You need it for that much just to get, you know, there's a lot of wetland in that corner over there.
Yeah, that's me. Yes, sir.
I have a few comments to make. First off, this plan, I live on History Drive, the last house on History Drive, as we know it. I don't know, any of the board members have walked this property at all, or ever been up there? Probably not.
We just got the plans like today.
Alright, well, it's, it's a, it's a really nice piece of property. It does have downward slopes, and it has low lands, but as the first development was put up to it, it was approved, it was. Uh, and, and again, I have no connection with this developer or any other developer, but the first one was approved, and a lot of things were discussed about that, and everything went through fine. This one here is basically exactly the same thing. It doesn't have an access to Garden Street, which takes a pressure off of people down there. Um, I, you know, I think that the plan is excellent, I think he's doing an excellent job of designing it, I think it's pretty much like the old plan. The only thing I can suggest to him is, and to the board members, and if you wanna take it for what it's worth. The trees that are located on Monument and, uh, Minuteman are in the tree lane, what they call a tree lane, town tree lane. I think that you ought to consider putting them off the tree lane and, and maybe on the properties. And I'll tell you the reason for it. We have a great deal of, um, destruction to the sidewalks up there. The trees, uh, roots are coming through the sidewalks. I complained about it fourteen years ago, and, uh, the town said that they were gonna try to straighten it out, they have not. Uh, it, it, we approve you to build the trees further back than on the tree lane, and, and maybe move the sidewalk closer to the street, whatever the, whatever permits. But, uh, only for your benefit, so that it doesn't ruin the neighborhood's aesthetic view. Second of all, I don't know, um, I heard that someone mentioned the monument up there. The monument is in, uh, I don't know if you've discussed it with anyone, but the monument is downtown already, set up. Now, I, I don't know if they know anything about removing it or moving it, do you know?
Actually, I was gonna bring that up to the board.
Tony knows.
We reached out to, um, Chairwoman Jean O'Reilly.
Yeah.
And, um, we require her to copy the plans, awaiting her comments too, just to confirm, as I recall, and after questions this board has, uh, conversation in the past, and the previous approval, with respect to the proper location for that monument. It's currently down by the, uh, the center.
Yeah, right, it's down, uh, Ross and Nap by.
The community center.
Right.
So, um, there is a location identified on this plan from what I saw, but it's, um, it should be confirmed with, um, the historical commission to make sure that it's in the proper location. That it's the D A R monument.
Right. I was under the impression after talking to Jean some time ago, that she didn't really want it up there, she wanted it down there. There was land offered to her, uh, the historical.
It still is on the corner of that, on the corner of History Drive.
Right.
There is a place for it.
There is, but what, who owns that now? I, I, I don't know if there's still a question about who owns that, that piece of land, uh, next to my property, that diamond, that. Pie-shaped piece of property.
At one point, that was gonna deed it to the, at some point, it was gonna deed that little section to the town, I don't.
Yeah, the original developers.
It was asked, from what I understand, I asked, talked to Ms. Grace, and she's, I, if I'm quoting her right, she says, I offered it the town, the town refused it.
Yeah.
And, um, so I wanted it to go to the builder, 'cause I don't wanna pay taxes on that little piece of land. So that's what I heard. So, if, that piece of land wasn't on his plans for putting up the monument anyways now. So that's something that maybe the board doesn't know about, but, or the historical commission hasn't made a decision, decision on, but the monument, you may not have to put it up there, that's what I'm getting.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, you don't, yeah, you don't, yeah, you don't, it's not even, it's not on your.
Where did the troops actually camp out? Up there?
Up on the hill, yeah, there's a site, yeah.
So, so the G A R monument's right down by the parking lot near the community center, right?
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So the troops never spent any time near the skate park? That's okay, though.
Like I said, Jean, Jean, the historical commission will.
I defer to the historical commission, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When we, when we kept this land designated, they had to remove the monument from where it was.
Yeah, it was a whole thing, who's gonna maintain it, yeah, don't, you guys.
I know, if I didn't even drive somewhere, it was a long drive.
It's not on any of their property at all, so it's not really pertinent to.
Right, so, but it is on the, it is marked on their property, and I just wanted to bring that to a point. I'm not criticizing or complaining or adding anything to it, just want you to be aware of what, what's going on, the monument's already in place.
Right.
Yeah. They decided not to put it up there, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yes. But if you ever walk that area, it's a beautiful piece of land, talking about drainage, I don't think there's gonna be a problem, because this area of the lots here is gonna be heavily treed, there's no, there shouldn't be any waterfall problems in that area. I know this is early to be saying something like this, 'cause you've got longer ways to be telling the plans, but I don't think you're gonna have any problems. I know there is wetlands on the, I walked that property a lot, um, and I know quite a bit about that property, but, so.
If it's an issue, they all go see you.
Where do you, where do you live, according to this?
Right, the end, the end house, Jack Carroll, I'm, I'm very end, I'm, we talked before, Jeff on the phone.
Okay.
Right in this.
Yes.
Yeah, I talked to you once before on the phone.
Right in this piece?
Um, so. That's, that's, that's all I had to say, that was it, to criticize, I thought the plan was good, comparison to the yellow plan, I think it's right on the money, so I think you, you know, it's a workable deal.
A lot of work that's gotta go into a review yet.
Yeah, Graves is gonna.
Right.
Good evening, good evening. On the other side of the street.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
John Duennell, two History Drive, so right across from Jack.
Right.
A couple of questions. And how are you looking to run the utilities in?
On the ground.
On the ground, but straight up the road?
Yeah, it would be up the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, um, national grid.
So we have water, yeah. We have water would be connecting to the end here, and just running up the middle of the road, or right off the middle of the road.
Same thing with electric cable.
Electric would most likely go, you know, somewhere near the sidewalk area, off, off the road, and then the drainage is pretty much right at the center of the road.
Wholeheartedly agree with Jack with what he told you about the trees, okay, and it's not just on History Drive, it's throughout that whole development, which I'm sure you've seen. Uh, I heard you say you were looking to do what they did on Minuteman, which is maples, instead of, I call them scrub trees that they put on History.
Yeah, I noticed, I noticed the, uh, the trees on History as much as, uh, Minuteman, but I proposed, um, Bradford pears, I don't know if you're familiar, the board might be familiar with Bradford pear trees. They, uh, usually they're, uh, they're base.
They don't get that very high, though.
What?
They don't get very high.
No, they're not very, uh, evasive either, um, and they grow straight up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a pretty, uh, you know, they're nice trees. They wouldn't, I don't think they undermine the sidewalk as much as a maple or an oak, 'cause they don't get nearly that big, but I think that would be open for discussion there.
Major concerns for the board, uh, going forward with this project. As we saw with the previous project that was going to be a solar farm. Is the traffic obviously coming down History, coming up either Monument or Minuteman, the trucks? And how they're going to clean those vehicles before coming back out onto the Main Street?
Yeah, they got, they got the regulations they gotta skip with this, by her.
And I may be putting the cart before the horse, I know we have a long way to go on these meetings.
Usually they have scrub pads and stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, blasting. Because there is a lot of ledge in there.
Yeah.
So when you come down, probably two hundred feet, you start hitting ledge, and it starts dropping off. So just consideration for. Now, I know when they did my lot, uh, they didn't blast, they actually filled it in and raised it up six feet.
Yeah, no, they, most, most times you got ledge underneath, uh, buildup of, uh, hills. That'll be an, an expense you're not, you may end up seeing.
Well, that's how you're gonna, you run those test holes and stuff like that.
And if they do blast, there's, there's all sorts of regulations regarding blasting, okay, I know, I know that too.
Just a comment about the ledge. I can tell you from my house, which is about maybe two hundred feet from the, the line, that border, in my corner of my cellar, I had to blast to get down.
Just to get it lower.
So that's, that shows you how the ledge is already down that far on the street.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's all underground, yeah.
Thank you.
He'll find out putting in the road for sure, because he's, he's, those are just as deep as foundations, putting in is, uh.
Yeah.
And every, and every lot could be different too, like you said, some of them you might have to fill, some of them you might have to block, you know, every lot can be different.
Yeah.
Anyone else? We will be, we will be continuing this meeting. I want to take a motion to continue this public hearing till.
And, and this chairman, I. Question to you, to the board, is, um, given at the next meeting, we have the distribution center before us.
Yeah.
And strongly, don't see any issue if we put it on the agenda, my question would be whether we should also reserve the senior center just in case we get a large crowd, um, for both items. So, I'm happy to do that.
Do you think, do you think a third party can have anything, something ready for the, uh, tenth?
We just, we have to just make a.
I know, he, he hasn't even seen this project yet, so.
So, we can go to the next meeting in January, I mean.
Hey, you wouldn't rush.
Just put them up.
No, no.
No, I'm asking you if you're in rush.
No, no.
If you want us to.
Well, the, 'cause that review's gonna take a while, I mean.
Yeah, it is, they, they gotta review all your, all your stormwater management, uh, stuff, you know, and the whole bit, that's why we're hiring the third-party consultant. But they're not usually very fast about doing. Not usually thirty days. She with the holidays and everything else.
Yeah, not gonna hurt any.
Would you mind if we continued to the second meeting in, uh, January? January twenty-second, is that the next?
Don't have, you have the new calendar, so you're gonna.
I like I can read that.
You do? Oh, okay. Didn't know I had it here. Twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth.
At seven oh five, we have nothing else scheduled.
We again. I'll, I'll, I'll make that a motion, I think, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay, seven oh five on the twenty-fourth, here, in this, in this, uh, room.
Yeah.
We'll help, we'll hold yours.
Yeah.
At seven oh, and you'll be the first one on here, so if that big one gets continued, it'll be after you.
They're after you. They'll have to move, they'll bump them one more, yeah.
I have a feeling that the big one at first meeting, we're gonna be several hours in that thing, just that thing alone.
What's the, um, if you'll let me ask, what's the big one for?
The big distribution center in, uh, in kinda North Oxford.
Off of De, off of Depot Street, right along the highway.
Really?
Right off of three ninety-five.
Out beyond the pond. I don't think it'll be that big of a deal.
Hopefully, we'll get some feedback from the third party, Graves, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Eagle, I hit Eagle Lisa, they go where the friggin' people, where the, where the old dump used to be?
Yeah.
I mean, those, they're, they're really, I hate to go, walk, even walk out, see, but this is all highway. But the people on it.
Good night.
Correct, the people on Old Mill Road.
Okay.
I wanna ask.
We're still in session, you guys can go, but we're still in session. Okay?
Yeah. So distracting us.
I, I know, I know, they wanna talk right here.
Yeah.
Alright, Tony, it's your turn.
Yeah.
I'll be really quick, um, might as well end on the, on the final. You've got the, uh, grant for the open space and rec plan.
Oh, nice.
So really excited about that, thank you for the board's support, so twenty twenty-two will be busy on the, the open space and rec plan.
Um, so as we know, next meeting is the distribution center, um, they are going before Conservation East Commission, they met earlier, this is gonna be their second meeting on Wednesday, and, um.
Do anticipate a, a good number of folks, as I understand, they have about twenty or twenty-five people appear at the Con, Conservation Commission meeting, so, um. We'll be meeting, uh, next meeting is January tenth at, uh, seven oh five.
And you've got it scheduled for here right now, that's the way it's worded, right? Let's, let's try it here.
Yeah.
I do have a backup though, I, I have.
Yeah, we, we've done this, we can open up that back there, we've had, remember.
But just in case, okay, if we need it, last minute.
Rich, can I just, can I ask Tony one question?
Yeah.
Um, Tony, what are the, a lot of these plans that we get in, you guys scan in, right? Is there a chance we can get, you can email out scans of these plans? I mean, I don't, if you wanna just do it for me, that's fine, but, um, and I don't need like the full, if you just wanna group them all together and just blast them at me, that's fine, just so, 'cause I'd like to, a lot of these plans, like maybe pull up on my phone and look at them during the meetings. And, you know, like, uh, thank you for allowing me to unfold that, you know, one inch goes one inch plan on it.
I still remember the meeting, I was banging, if I could, if I could.
It's no problem, I'm happy to do that. If anybody else wishes to receive electronic in lieu of, or both.
Yeah, I would, I would, I don't want any, if I, if I can get no paper, I'd be fine with that.
I'm okay with that too.
Okay.
I like paper.
Jeff, are you gonna be okay? I'm just distracted.
But you don't even get your mail, though. That's true, I have to come get it.
I'm hearing, I'm listening.